Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Do you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the March 31st meeting of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. A thought for today is a Chinese proverb which says, "A gem cannot be polished without friction, nor a person perfected without trials." The first item of business on our agenda is a decision on an expedited-to-annexation petition of 91.23 acres from LaGrange Township to the village of LaGrange, Attorney Paul Blevins as the agent. The Board of Commissioners, especially Commissioner Kalos, administrative assistant who kept track, we have received over eighty emails or phone calls regarding this matter. It's of high interest to the people in LaGrange Township and village. I would like to say that in my past history as a Carlisle Township Clerk, my experience has been that LaGrange Township and village have a long history of collaborating on issues of importance to their respective communities. I believe it's unfortunate that today's meeting is the subject of a divided community. But the Commissioners are here to make a decision on an annexation that was presented to us, and as unpleasant as that may be, we will have to do our job. First of all, I would like to recognize Paul Blevins, who is the attorney representing the petitioners. Mr. Blevins, if you'd like to come to the microphone.
Move this up a little bit. Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak. As President Blair indicated, we are here on the annexation of approximately 91.23 acres from LaGrange Township into LaGrange Village. Harkening back to the comments that Mrs. Blair made last week with regards to the annexation law, we are proceeding here under a new annexation law, different than in past years. It's expedited, and it has new procedures different from those that the Commissioners have dealt with in the past. And I'm sure that the Commissioners are fully aware of the law and up on the changes. I offer my comments in many ways for the record, and as well for some of the laypeople in the office here today. As everyone knows, the process for annexation is controlled by the Ohio Revised Code. Under the new law, there are several different ways within which you can proceed with an annexation. This annexation is seeking to proceed under Section 709.023. It's a very specialized and expedited process. When the state legislature reviewed the annexation laws, they were concerned about some of the feeling that townships were being harmed by annexation. And the harm was being caused when property was actually being removed from the township, removed from the tax rolls for those townships, and leaving them with less of a tax base. Under the annexation procedure that we're following today, .023, that will not happen. Under this expedited process, the land, the 91 acres that is currently in LaGrange Township, will remain in LaGrange Township. It will simply also be included within the village. Now, LaGrange Village is very unique within the county in that every portion of the village is still within the township. They pay taxes to both the village and the township. They have the right to vote for both township trustees and village representatives. So, under O23, that property is going to stay in the township. It is going to stay within the township's tax base, and it can never be removed from the township. So, we're dealing with a situation where the legislature legislation has said, "In that situation where the property is not being removed from the township, and the tax base is not being affected for the township, we're going to allow for these expedited procedures, where we're going to set out specific guidelines, and if the 100% of the landowners want to annex their property into the village, and they've met the seven criteria that we set forth within the code, then the Commissioners have an obligation to approve the annexation and move it along to the next stage." Last week, prior to the meeting, I believe the Commissioners received, and I received, a copy of a letter from Jerry Phillips, attorney for some of the residents in LaGrange Township. In that letter, Mr. Phillips identifies nine objections to the annexation. And I'll just quickly address those. I've spoken with Mr. Innis, your counsel, and provided him with my thoughts on the matter, and I'm sure that he has provided his thoughts on it as well to you. In point number one, Mr. Phillips alleges that the annexation petition does not contain all of the owners in the annexation territory. And specifically, he was saying that the roadways that are owned by the state and the county are included in the annexation, but the county and the state have not signed off on the petition. Well, legally, the owners are defined as not including the state or the county. And that is, in Ohio Revised Code Section 709.02E, owner is defined as any adult individual who is legally competent, the state or any political subdivision as defined in Section 5713.081, and any firm, trustee, or private corporation, any of which is seized of a freehold estate in the land, except that easements in any railroad, utility, street, any highway rights of way held in fee by easement or by dedication and acceptance are not included within those meanings. So, Mr. Phillips' objection that the state and the county have not been identified or signed off on this petition just is not legally correct. Those are not included within the definition of owners. Objection number two, Mr. Phillips alleges that petitioners have failed to give the required notices to the owners of the property. At the time that we filed the petition, we filed correspondence along with it identifying all of the adjacent property owners. Included within those identifications were Mr. and Mrs. Glover, and Mr. and Mrs. Palmieri. The following day, we prepared, my office prepared correspondence to all of the people who are identified as adjacent property owners, and those were sent out on the same day. I provided Mr. Innis with an affidavit from my secretary as to the procedures and how that those letters, as well as copies of the letters that went to Mr. Glover, or Mr. and Mrs. Glover, or Mr. and Mrs. Palmieri, that went out that day. Moreover, if you look at the grounds that the county Commissioners have to review and determine, the code just says that you have to make sure that the notices were sent. As to whether they were received or not is not really the legal issue, is what, were they sent? Objection number three, Mr. Phillips alleges that the annexation will create islands of land remaining in LaGrange Township. By definition within the code, an island has to be surrounded by four sides by the village. There are no such parcels of land within this annexation. There are some peninsulas, but peninsulas are different than islands. I'd also like to note that we have, the county Commissioners actually, you have provided a copy of the annexation map and the petition to the county engineer's office, and the county engineer has approved it after their review. Objection number four is Mr. Phillips complained that the village of LaGrange had filed its ordinances indicating what services it would provide to the property 21 days after the petition was filed. He claims that, or actually, the code says that this should be done within 20 days after the petition, after the petition is filed. Nevertheless, the only basis that there would be for denying the petition with regards to this ordinance would be if there was no ordinance filed at all. When you look at the subsection which details the seven grounds upon which the Commissioners are to review this annexation, that's 709.023 subsection E, subsection six deals with the ordinances, and that section says, "The municipal corporation to which annexation is proposed has agreed to provide to the territory proposed for annexation the services specified in the relevant ordinance or resolution adopted under Division C of this section." It just says that, in that section, and that's the section that you're reviewing this annexation on, that the village has to indicate that it will provide the services. It doesn't in that section indicate that it has to be done within a specific time period, or that the whole mess should be thrown out if the village doesn't do something within one day. And on that, let me refer to Revised Code Section 709.015. It basically deals with the procedural requirements of the code. And I'm going to skip down to just the last sentence in that section. It says, "The board shall cure a procedural defect and shall not deny a petition for annexation solely upon the basis of a procedural defect." If the village is filing their ordinances on the 21st day as opposed to the 20th day is considered a procedural defect, which we don't necessarily concede that, which we don't concede that, the board and the legislature has set forth that the board shouldn't waste everybody's time and make the petition start all over again and get the village to file things on the 20th day. You should cure such a defect, if that's a defect at all. Objection number five, Mr. Phillips indicated the village of LaGrange cannot provide the necessary sanitary sewer services until the completion of the Durham Ridge subdivision. He again alleges this is violation of subsection six. But as I discussed before, subsection six just requires that the village indicate whether it will provide the services or not. It doesn't have to indicate whether it can, and it's not for the Commissioners to really investigate as to whether the village can, should, or whatnot. It's just, have they agreed, and have they gone through the process? And in this situation, the village has said that it will provide the sewer services to the development once it goes through. We have Mayor Strauss here in the audience, if there's any question about the truth to that fact. It's my understanding there is none. Objection number six was similar to objection number five with regards to 21 days, and I'll just refer back to that same analysis. Objection number seven was similar to, again, similar to the 21 days, and again, I won't reiterate my points on that. Objection number eight was that the road maintenance ordinance passed by the village was legally deficient. The issue of road maintenance is raised by subsection E7 of the code, and it states that "If a street or highway will be divided or segmented by the boundary line between the township and the municipal corporation as to create a road maintenance problem, the municipal corporation to which the annexation is proposed has agreed as a condition of the annexation to assume the maintenance of the street or highway or to otherwise correct the problems." First, let me say, the county engineer has reviewed this annexation, and they haven't identified any problem, road maintenance problems. Nevertheless, the village had gone forward and said that if there is a problem, and with regards to road maintenance, that they'll take care of whatever they need to take care of. And that's all that's required by the code. Mr. Phillips' argument to the contrary notwithstanding. Objection number nine, Mr. Phillips argues that the annexation petition did not contain an accurate legal description. By letter from the county engineer, soon after we filed the petition, the engineer indicated that there was an error of a typographical nature in the legal description. It's typographical in that it does not change the amount of land that is being annexed. It does not change the perimeter or boundary line of the parcels to be annexed. In order to correct the record on March 7th, the petitioners filed a motion to amend the petition, and on the day after, we provided county Commissioners with an amended legal description. The sole change between the first legal description and the amended one was the deletion in course nine of the legal description of the language, quote, "and the corporation line of the village of LaGrange," end quote. That's all that's been changed. That phrase was deleted. The new statute that we're operating under does not specify the means for raising the issue of a correction such as this. So, we filed a motion to amend, which was styled on 709031 from the old code. The power to act, however, is within the Commissioners, and that's derived from Revised Code Section 709.015, which I read to you earlier, which indicates that the Commissioners shouldn't turn something down based on a procedural defect, that it should only turn something down if there's substantive deficiency in the petition. That's the nine objections that Mr. Phillips has brought. We don't believe that he has stated anything legally relevant to this annexation that would require denial of the annexation. And on behalf of the property owners of the property, who would like to have their property moved or included within the village, I would ask that the county Commissioners approve the annexation today. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Blevins. Mr. Phillips?
My name is Gerald W. Phillips. My address is 35955 Detroit Road. This is a special annexation procedure. It's called a type two. For tax purposes, the annex area will remain within the township for tax purposes, and that's specifically provided in 709.023. But the zoning is going to be subject to the village. The services are going to be provided by the village. So, from a practical point, it's removed from the township for services, and that the only thing on a type two is the tax stays with the township. So, Mr. Blevins' comments to that extent, I believe, are incorrect. Also, he's incorrect in this aspect. The people in the township do not vote for the village council members, and the people in the village do not vote for the trustees. And I know that for a fact because we had a referendum dealing with zoning changes, and the village didn't vote for it. They're separate legal entities. They're not the same, and they can't vote for each other legally. So, that statement by Mr. Blevins is incorrect. The petition suffers from a number of defects which he alluded to. First of all, the county Commissioners have no legislative authority to change 709.023, and you can't change and extend the time period in which the law requires. You have to apply the law, as Commissioner Blair says, whatever the statute says, you've got to comply with. And the fact that, and two of the errors, that they did not timely file the statement of services that they were provided, or their statement that they will provide the necessary road maintenance, is legally defective. You can't extend that date. And the statute's clear, it says that "The clerk of the legislative authority of the municipal corporation to which the annexation is proposed shall file the ordinances or resolutions adopted under this division with the Board of County Commissioners within 20 days, following the date the petition is filed." Your own sheet that deals with your checklist clearly indicates that the petition was filed on the 22nd. Teresa Upton, who has this sheet in the file, clearly notes that these petitions, these ordinances were filed on March 15th. They were due on 14th. Now, the township had to file their objections within 25 days. They timely filed it because they were filed on March 18th, the day before the 25th day. It's unfortunate that the petitioners didn't follow the law, but you can't change the law. You can't change the law. You're not the state legislator. They passed that statute. You've got to comply with the law as it is. And they did not timely file those things. Therefore, on the date that they were supposed to, there was no statement of services, and there's no statement that they were providing road maintenance. Therefore, from that perspective, this petition is clearly legally defective, not in compliance with 70923E, which required that statement filed within 20 days, and 70923E7, where that road maintenance thing had to be filed within 20 days. Also, they needed to file an accurate legal description. As we sit here today, there's been no motion accepted, I mean, there's been no approval of the motion to amend, so we don't have a correct legal description before you on that petition. Maybe the first thing you should do is approve the amendment, because you haven't done it as of today. And once that's done, they've got to go through the process again with providing the correct notice. And the notice in the defect in the legal description wasn't a typographical, it dealt with the substance adder as far as whether the boundary line was the village or the township, in connection with one of the items. The issue about islands, I guess that's an interpretation of the statute. If you look at 709.23E5, it says islands, and they will be segments of slivers of land included in the 2.5 acres of road-highway that they say aren't going to be part. They're going to be surrounded. They're going to be surrounded by roadways and the annexed territory. They'll be isolated, and there's a number of areas there. So, I believe that statute means you don't create islands, and that's what they have done. And that's 709.023E5. In connection with the road maintenance thing, if you look at the annexation section, you'll see there'll be a small section of 301, which is being annexed, and a small section of bigs, clearly segments the road. In their ordinance, they don't claim that they're going to maintain anything other than annexation, the annex area. That's what their resolution of providing road services states. Doesn't say they're going to maintain the other portion of the segmented road, which 709023E indicates that they needed to do. So, it's deficient from that perspective. As far as providing services, that statement that they'll provide sanitary sewer and water and storm sewers, you know, the village of LaGrange, by a resolution 10-96, has joined the LARCO facility planning area, and that's exhibited by Exhibit G in the information I provided. And Exhibit H, which is the final entry from the Common Police Court of Lorraine County, clearly adopted under 611902, that facility planning area, and I believe 15 townships. The only ones that didn't sign on are Columbia, Penfield, and Brighton. So, this is within the facility planning area of LARCO. Exhibit I is an agreement between Lorraine County and LARCO to jointly service this area, which includes all those townships. And Exhibit J is an agreement between LARCO and Avon Lake to provide services within that facility planning area. As we sit here today, this particular area in LaGrange Township and LaGrange Township is in LARCO's planning district, and it cannot be switched without going through a procedure. So, as we sit here today, legally, the village of LaGrange cannot legally provide the services because it's not in their district. If they want to, they can appeal and request that and go through NWACA, and that's Exhibit by Exhibit K. They need to follow Policy 4.6. As of today, they have not done that. As of today, the village cannot legally, under no circumstances, facilitate that area under the Clean Water Act of 2002 and the wastewater management plan in district adopted by LARCO, and evidenced by those agreements. So, they can put all they want, that they have a piece of paper that says they'll provide it, but legally they can't, they can't. And the annexation statute says that they've got to be able to provide the services, just not write a piece of paper saying they can. And if they legally can't do that, then they haven't met the conditions of 709.023E6. They can't provide the services. And you can't approve an annexation under a type two unless they can legally do it. Not that they state they can do it, but legally do it, both from a legal perspective and even from a practical. We don't even know as of now whether they have the capacity. We don't know how many homes are going to be built in the area, and the amount of volume, and whether they have capacity in the facility to do that. An EPA would have to approve that. What they should have done was got EPA approval indicating they have the capacity, and went through the process of getting legally that they can, and they haven't done that yet. And since they haven't done that yet, unfortunately, they haven't met the statute that they can legally provide the services. And as was indicated at the last meeting, your job is to look at the statute, and if they meet the conditions, then you can approve it. If not, you have to reject it. And they haven't met the conditions. They haven't met the conditions. As far as 709.023EC, they can't legally provide those services for the sanitary sewer. It's not in their district. They haven't gotten the WACA approval, and they haven't met the statutory requirements of filing the required statements within the period. I mean, it's unfortunate that they didn't comply with the statute. I know Mr. Blevins, and, you know, I respect him, but the law is the law. You can't rewrite the law. You can't rewrite 709023 and change the periods of time. And therefore, you have to reject this on the basis it doesn't comply with those statutory guidelines. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Mr. Innis?
Mr. Phillips, if I may, there's a couple of questions I would like to... Mr. Blevins brings up Section 709.015, which specifically says that the procedural requirements of this statute are directory in nature. It subsequently says, "The Board of Commissioners shall allow those defects to be cured and shall not deny the petition solely based on procedural defects." Do you have a response to that argument?
Yeah, I think you need to look at 70921. That specifically defines areas which will not be fatal, and it says, "Once the annexation has become final and the annexation territory has been recognized as part of the annexing municipal corporation and taxes levy, then no error or regularity or defect shall be able to be asserted to invalidate it." So, 709.21 clearly indicates when defects won't be fatal to the procedures. And I don't consider specific statutory provisions as far as dates as procedural, their substance as far as filing the necessary requirements. The amendment of the petition may be procedural in the sense of amending the legal description to amend it and go through the process again without having to refile, but I don't consider statutory obligations imposed by the state legislature who has legislative power in the state as procedural. When they specify deadlines, they are met. Otherwise, then you can file something 30 days, 40 days late. What's the time period then? I mean, you know, then why have the law in the first place? If that's procedural, maybe we should change, you know, add other items in the seven enumerated ones, too. You know, unfortunately, you can't rewrite the law, and neither Mr. Blevins or the county Commissioners has that authority. It says what it says, within 20 days.
Okay, then I have one other question, going upon your statement that the Commissioners cannot rewrite the law. The provision regarding the services says that the municipal corporation has to submit an ordinance in which they agree to provide the territory with certain services. You have indicated several times that they need to prove that they can do this, and they need to demonstrate that ability. I don't see that language in that statute. Aren't we rewriting that requirement into the statute, Mr. Phillips?
Well, what's your definition of agree? Does that mean they can put on a piece of paper and say that they'll provide the services when legally they cannot provide it? I think a reasonable interpretation of that is that they have to agree to provide services that they're legally able to provide. Otherwise, they don't meet the condition. The purpose of the statute is to make sure that the annexing municipality or entity can provide those services, okay, and have agreed to provide those. If they can't, by putting on a piece of paper saying, "We'll provide those services," when legally they're unable, it's meaningless. So, when you look at the word "agree," okay, there's implicitly implied in that is that they legally can provide the services, and they have agreed to provide those services. they legally can provide the services and they have agreed to provide those services. If they can't provide it, then that statement that they're agreeing to is empty and has no substance.
Okay, thank you. Just to clarify the record on one item, Commissioners, with regard to the voting in the township, the residents in the village do not vote on zoning issues. They do vote for the elected officials of the township.
Thank you, Jerry. Do you have any other comments that you wish to make to the commissioners?
Not right at this time.
Okay. We've heard from the legal councils representing the various entities. Just for the public's consumption, I would like to point out that the law regarding this type of an annexation does not provide for any involvement or public comment regarding the petition. However, I do see a large number of people here, and we have heard from a large number of you. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes... Excuse me, Jerry? Okay. Thank you. Jerry suggested that perhaps we would recognize Mayor Strauss or and/or any of the township trustees who might wish to make a statement. Trustee Rita Canfield? Does she need... Does it need to be sworn in, Jerry? Good morning, Rita.
Good morning. My name is Rita Canfield. My address is 461 St. Anne Court. I'm a trustee for LaGrange Township. This annexation proceeding has been very disruptive to our entire community, both the village and the township. And I'd like to bring out just a couple of concerns that we do have with this, as residents as well as elected officials. Primarily, this is a section of property that is located in LARCO's service area and their facility planning area. The viability of LARCO as an organization has often been called into question. Undermining their authority and their ability to provide services at this point could present problems for the rest of the members of LARCO as well as the Village of LaGrange and LaGrange Township. The roadway issues and the maintenance, therefore, of Route 301, which is a state highway, and Biggs Road, which is a township road, have clearly not been completely resolved and are yet open for discussion. Depending on where the sewers are installed, where the lines themselves are run, which we've seen no plans for yet, that could create a burden for some of the other residents who have not asked for annexation. And we'd like to have that as part of our thought processes when we do this. Is this good public planning for the other residents as well as those who are currently asking for annexation? How are their rights and considerations being evaluated? The promise of service to areas has often been given by annexing municipalities. However, the ability for them to come through with those promises has often been lacking, and I would not like that to happen in this instance here. The township and the village have both spent a great deal of money and time on both a land use survey and a land use plan. In our land use survey, we were clearly given numbers, and we have the records to prove that, that high density or even medium density was not something that our residents, both of the village and the township, were very much in favor of. They were very concerned about that. We've tried to create a land use plan that reflected those values. That clearly has not been addressed in this issue. We do have high-density zoning, and we still have areas in that high-density area that can be built on. Pheasant Run is currently high-density. And while this proposed annexation will not be high-density, it is more of a medium-density area, it does not comply with our current land use plan for that area. We have a current resolution pending for public discussion to have medium density. That lot size will be 150 as it is proposed by 225. This attempt to circumvent township zoning is motivated by monetary gain and not good community planning. The township is still willing to work with this developer, as with every other developer, to try to ensure that growth is managed not only for the township but also for the village. We, as the township, currently provide not only fire and EMS protection, but we have LARCO to provide sewers, we have Lorain County Rural Water, who provides water service to this area. And we also have the Lorain County Sheriff's Department to provide other types of needed assistance. There's nothing that the village is asking for that's not already being provided. We're asking the county commissioners to allow township zoning and township planning to continue. We have served this area very well for a number of years. We ask for the rights for that to continue. We also ask for a full consideration in your opposition to this proposed annexation. Thank you.
Thank you, Rita. Mayor Strauss?
Commissioners, my name is Kim Strauss. I'm mayor for the Village of LaGrange. I do agree and disagree with some of these issues. The one that offends me the most is normally when a township tries to say that we are once again taking their property. We have discussed this on council. We have had meetings with our trustees. We have agreements in place and projects going on that are basically unheard of in any other village township relationship. We had already agreed to serve this property in the township, which is also something that you don't hear very often. We did not want to take this property. But on the same hand, these people have come to the village and they have asked us to join our village. And there are numerous reasons. Yes, some of them for monetary gain with a developer who needs a specified lot size. I've heard that some of them want police protection. I've heard that some of them are tired of their septic systems and want our sewer system. So as a council and mayor, our decision was, you know, we are not taking property, but if 100% of these people would like to join our village, I believe that we should allow them if we can handle them and our services can handle them. I've heard many comments that our sewer system can handle it, and Mr. Phillips has given you some information that was very, very minimally correct. As far as the 208 planning area, yes, absolutely, it is in LARCO's district, which I think people need to understand is controlled by LARCO and the county. When that property is annexed, at that time, we will sit down with LARCO. And the bottom line here is, if LARCO can serve that property more efficiently than we can, that property will go to LARCO. But if the political subdivisions are doing their job, that are involved with this piece of property, if the Village of LaGrange can serve that property the cheapest and most efficient way, then that property should also be turned over to the village. And we understand that as a village, and I have had discussions with Jim McConnell from LARCO, and he understands that also. Because as political activists, whatever you want to call all these different groups, the bottom line is, the resident is the one that we are supposed to take care of, that we are supposed to think of. And I guarantee you that the village will do that when we sit down with LARCO. And if we can't work out a deal with LARCO, then we will go in front of NAWACA. And I would hope that NAWACA will make that decision based on what is best for those residents. And that is what the Village of LaGrange will do also. So... And I've also been told that this is a very mute point until the annexation goes through or doesn't go through. Can we provide services? Yes. I could provide you with lots of numbers and statistics that would probably bore you to death the same way it bores me, but I can guarantee you that we have plenty of capacity. We are even in discussions with LARCO because they would like to use some of our capacity. So I hope that if, when the commissioners look at this situation, that they look at what we have tried to do in LaGrange, that we tried to service this within the township. We did not force this annexation. And to be quite honest with you, and we have talked to this issue on council many times, when this property enters the village, we have to plow the streets, we have to fix the water lines, we have to fix the sewer lines. If we could have left this in the township and collected sewers, we'd have done nothing but sit back and got a check every month and watched the township fix everything. So to think that we really want to take this property is almost fiscally irresponsible. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor Strauss. For your attendance and your comments, is there anyone else who would like to address the board this morning regarding this matter? Commissioners, do you have comments?
Yes. My job as a county commissioner is to represent the people. Obviously, by all these messages and all these emails, it's apparent that the township people do not want this annexation. I think one of two things are going to happen if we deny this annexation. The petitioners are going to come back with all their i's dotted and their t's crossed, or it's going to go to a lawsuit. So my job... What I would hope would happen if this gets denied today, because it's my job, I'm going to vote no, that the township and the developers sit down and come to some type of compromise before either, you know, the petitioners come back with a new petition or it goes to a lawsuit. So today, I will do my job and represent you and vote no. And if it goes to court, then the prosecutors will have to do their job and figure out what the law, if the law is for or against you.
Commissioner Kaylow?
Again, doing our job as the commissioners. I've been in contact with Andy Vidra from NAWACA. He had no concerns over sewer issues being at LARCO or LaGrange Village. I understand Mr. Phillips' point, heard Mr. Blevins. But per the law and speaking to our attorneys, it is landowners wanting to be annexed into the village, and that's what we're here to vote on. So after comments, I would like to make a motion to approve the annexation.
I don't know who to direct my question to, but I appreciated the comments of both trustee Canfield and mayor Strauss. I wonder if there would be an opportunity for the parties involved, including the petitioner, to go back and to look at the prior agreement that had been worked out and to see if we couldn't rework that agreement so that the property could receive the service from the city, as the mayor mentioned, and the land could still stay in the township. Is there any opportunity for the commissioners to encourage that action to occur? Paul, would you come to the microphone? Realizing while you're walking there, I know that there was a lot of time and effort that went into that.
Yes, and your comments are appreciated. And that is why Mr. Tippel, who is the president of Marinata Custom Homes, went through the past year and a half trying to work out some sort of resolution with the township, which could benefit both sides. The trustees, in fact, passed a zoning ordinance that would have worked, but then it was shot down by a referendum. So there is no zoning category with the density that would allow him to move forward with his development. He owns the property now and has been holding that property for a significant period of time. If the question is, will the petition be withdrawn today? I can't... No, it will not be withdrawn today. We will continue to work with the township and the village, as has always been the case. This has not been as adversarial as it might appear to today. There are a lot of people in the township who support it. Actually, all of the eight members of the petition group are township residents. So I'm sorry, I can't say that we will not withdraw the petition today. We'd like to have a vote on it. We will continue to work in good faith with all parties involved. It's just that each of these petitioners has their reasons for moving forward. And at least with regards to Mr. Tippel, who your question was addressed to, he just can't continue to hold this property for months and months without moving it forward.
And I appreciate that. I guess that perhaps if the residents of LaGrange Township became aware of what the opportunities for this property would be, maybe they might think twice about the actions they took last year and be more open-minded.
I agree with you. And that was what was said at the time that zoning was... When the ballot went... When the thing went to the ballot, was that this will be one of the things that we'll have to proceed. But as I said, we're too far down this road. Obviously, Mr. Tippel would have loved to have had all that gone in place last November and started construction, but now here we are almost five, six months down the road. He just can't continue on the if come. Because we... I mean, I think that things would change, but we can't... We don't know for sure, and we cannot risk this business for another six months of holding this property.
And I appreciate that.
My apologies.
Jerry?
The voters, by about 75%, voted down that proposal for high density. The residents have worked with the trustees and have proposed numerous revisions between what that... The zoning, which was defeated, and other proposals. So there's been compromise in the sense of changing the zoning and submitted by the residents somewhere between what the developer wanted and what's existing. So any indication that there's been no cooperation on behalf of the residents is entirely false, completely wrong.
And that was not my intention.
And the residents are more than willing to work with the trustees and the village to try to get to a resolution. So, I mean, there's no unwillingness on behalf of the residents. And the commissioners know, maybe not this body, but, you know, I was here last year in connection with an issue involving East River Road and Chestnut Ridge Road, where we worked out a reasonable solution to a problem. And I always advise my clients to pursue that, and we're more than willing to do that with all parties. So whatever the commissioners decide, if they do reject it, we'll be at the table in the interim until they come back, and we'll be working on a solution. And if it does come back, maybe in the interim, we'll have worked out a deal and hammer out a deal, and it'll make it a moot issue. So we are going to continue to try to reach a solution because it's an all or nothing. And to compromise and get something in the middle is better than run the risk and roll the dice and come up with nothing.
I like the word compromise. Thank you. And I didn't mean to suggest that, you know, we've been inserted in this process, which has been a year, year and a half long process. We've kind of been inserted after the fact, and then, oh, by the way, we have to make a decision, and that's our job. But...
I wasn't suggesting that the commissioners... It was just responding to Mr. Blevins' comments that seemed to indicate that the residents didn't come up with a counterproposal. And I just wanted to make the record straight that that was incorrect, that there have been many times, and I've been at many trustees' meetings, and we've offered solutions, okay, to the proposal, which would be somewhere in the middle, which would give them more units, but at the same time, provide some safeguards for the community. So we will continue that discussion. So it wasn't any suggestions of the commissioners. I was responding to Mr. Blevins' comments.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Ennis?
Just a few comments, Commissioners. Certainly, we've heard some comments about whether this is good or bad. I need to remind you that this is not a matter in which you decide what is good or bad for the village, the township, or the residents. It's purely a procedural matter in which you have to look through the seven factors in 709.023E and decide whether or not those factors have been met. If you decide to approve the annexation, you need to pass a resolution that says, "We find that each of those seven conditions have been met." If you pass a resolution to deny the annexation, your resolution must specify exactly which of those seven conditions you feel has not been met. That's procedurally what you have to do. You know, as we've heard several times, this is a brand-new law, and unfortunately, that creates some problems. Normally, when there are these kinds of issues and lawyers bring issues to you, we look to case laws, decisions by the court to help us decide the interpretation of these laws. There are no cases out there, so, you know, this is... Most of these issues are all issues of what we call first impression. So we have to call the shot without any direction or help from any other court. It may be that whichever way we go, this goes to court and we will get some direction. And although I usually don't like lawsuits, sometimes they're helpful. In any event, what you have heard is you have heard Mr. Blevins' opinions on what he believes the law is, and I don't find anything terribly unreasonable about what Mr. Blevins has presented. You have heard Mr. Phillips' presentation of what he believes the law to be, and I don't find anything terribly unreasonable about what he has presented. I have met with each of the commissioners, discussed the law. I've given you my opinion on some of these. I've given you my opinion on some of these things. What I have given you is based on numerous seminars that I went to when these laws were being proposed. I spoke with people who were drafting the law, legislatures, as to what they intended the law to be, and the remarks that I have given you is based on those. That doesn't mean any of those are right either, until a court says they are right. I am prepared to be more specific if the commissioners need to, any further comments, but we've already gone over these up and down several times. But that's kind of where we are at this point with regarding this petition. But again, if you make a motion to pass it, you must, that motion must say, "We find all seven conditions to be met." If you pass a motion and deny the annexation, you must specify which of those seven conditions that you feel has not been met.
Well, I would like to make a motion that all seven conditions have been met and ask for passage of the annexation.
If there's no second, is died due to a lack of a second?
I make a motion to deny the annexation, and I don't have the numbers of one through seven of which we can deny it. Would it be number five? Number seven. Number seven is to create a road maintenance problem. The fact that it was a couple days late, I'm not sure where that is on here.
That'd be six.
Number six, because it says F instead of six. For those reasons, I move...
Suppose you would also include, if any place that fits, it would be number one, so if that's...
The petition meets...
One, six, seven?
I'm sorry?
I would suggest if that's your reasoning, you go with one, six, and seven.
I will go with one, six, and seven. Thank you, Jerry. And as you stated, maybe we need to have some case law on this in the future, and I think regardless of which way we go with this, it's going to end up in a lawsuit. So, I would like to make the motion to deny the annexation.
I'll second. Any further discussion? Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
No.
Motion carried? Thank you for your attendance and comments this morning. Stay tuned, we have several annexations forthcoming. The next issue is a decision on an expedited two, which was, no, I'm sorry.
Small municipal.
I, I remember, excuse me. Decision on a municipal-owned land annexation petition of 155.289 acres from Wellington Township to the village of Wellington. Shall I read what Teresa has put together, this synopsis, or... Just recognize Mr. Bond?
Yeah, why don't you recognize?
Okay. Stephen Bond is the attorney representing, or the agent representing the village of Wellington. Mr. Bond, good morning.
Good morning. I intend to be brief and hopefully not controversial.
Hooray!
This application is in the same area as one...
They can't hear you very well in the back, Stephen.
This application is in the same area as one that we brought to you earlier, but it's a substantially reduced territory, and it's the two parcels that are the easternmost that are actually already owned by the village. The ones that, as I was hearing the comments the last time, everyone seemed to agree, well, of course, if we already own it, why shouldn't those come in? Well, those are the ones that we're here for today. It's only 155 acres. This is also under the new statute, and as we read the statute, which is 709.16, paragraph B, it says, "If the only territory to be annexed is contiguous territory owned by a municipal corporation, the Board of County Commissioners by resolution shall grant the annexation." Period. Nothing about any of the other issues that are related to any of the other kinds of annexations. You have a letter, I believe, in your file from the engineer's office dated March 9th saying that the parcels proposed to be annexed are adjacent and contiguous to the village, and you have a letter of March 21st from the engineer's office saying that the description does follow the map and both correctly describe the area of land proposed to be annexed. So, as we read the statute, we think we have complied with the only issues that there are. Now, the last time, there was a question about the road maintenance. As we read the statute, the road maintenance is not an issue for this type of annexation. Nevertheless, we have already approved the road maintenance agreement. It has been adopted by an ordinance of our council. It's been signed by administrator. It's been submitted to Mr. Ennis. I've talked to Mr. Ennis, as far as I am aware, he's in agreement with the text. So, we have no problem entering into that agreement in order to have that issue not be an issue as well. So, based on that, we would respectfully ask that these two parcels be brought into the village of Wellington.
Okay, and are these parcels, one and two, that are shown on the map?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Ennis?
The statements made by Mr. Bond are correct, commissioners. He has submitted, again, even though he may not have been required to, did submit a maintenance agreement that I have looked over and reviewed. I have sent that to the original, has gone to the engineer's office for their signature, and will be coming back to the commissioners. But I have reviewed that and approved it, and upon meeting the conditions that the land is contiguous and the engineer has indicated we have an accurate map and accurate legal description, it is my opinion that the commissioners are required by law to approve this annexation.
I like the use of the word "shall." Is there anyone in the audience who has any comment on this proposed annexation? If not, I. Commissioners, questions, comments? Since it's been pointed out to us by both Mr. Bond and Mr. Ennis that the revised code says "shall" because it's territory already owned by the municipality, I move that we approve the annexation as outlined.
Second?
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Thank you. The next one's very easy.
It's getting easier and easier. We like that.
Just wanted to mention for the record, and we probably want to put it in our journal entry, Teresa, this is another one of those situations in which the property is not excluded from the township. It remains in both jurisdictions.
Part of the township and the village. Since Teresa had a little trouble researching this, probably making those indications are important, right? Thank you. Thank you for all the work you did on that, too. Okay. Item number three, Teresa.
Just, you're going to receive and journalize a regular annexation petition of 13.48 acres from New Russia Township to the city of Oberlin. Attorney James Taylor is the agent. This hearing has been scheduled for Thursday, June 9, 2005, at 10:15 a.m.
Thank you. Now, we want to revert to...
No, we need to...
Nemo.
I thought we were just going to receive it. Also moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Thank you. Teresa wants us to revert to item number 17, since Mayor Smith's been waiting for a long time to tell about this fantastic community. So, Kelly Glenn?
Good morning. I'm Kelly Glenn, Assistant Director for Lorraine County Community Development Department. This is Carroll Sales Agency, Inc., Carroll Manufacturing Sales, U.S. Net Supply, requiring property located at 35179 Avon Comher's Parkway in Avon. The property is being, the company is going to construct a $70,000 square foot building and move their plant from Westlake, Ohio to Avon, Ohio. They will be making a minimum investment of $4,750,000 and a maximum investment of $11,500.
No, 11 million.
11 million, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Kelly.
All those zeros. The company will be retaining 43 full-time employees and creating 25 new full-time permanent jobs. And I will revert to Mayor Smith for further comments regarding this project.
Thank you, Kelly. Good morning, Mayor Smith.
Good morning. They're coming to the city of Avon, of course, in Westlake, and they are going to create 25 new jobs in the county over the next three years. It's a very aggressive growth plan. They are committed to hiring Lorraine County people, as many as they possibly can, to fill these positions. They are presently going to build 70,000 square feet, and their anticipation is, in the next couple of years, to add more square footage, more jobs, and I think this is a real plus. They make one of the, the past two companies that we have, one is completing their building right now, makes soup. They make packaging for the food industry. This is kind of a little bit of a diversion from our, you know, auto industry. It's nice to have companies of other different types of businesses, so that we can cushion the blow between the auto industry and others. They make, it's kind of funny, they make nettings for turkeys and hams. Every time you got a turkey or a ham with a net on it, they make it. They make packaging for Oklahoma steak and a lot of other different companies, so they're kind of recession-proof to a point. So, we're really looking forward to having them come to the city of Avon. And I know you see these numbers here, 4.7 million to 11 million, and you wonder why there's such a, you know, wide gap. That's the way the forums are now in the state of Ohio. They say, well, what do you think your minimum is? What do you think your maximum will be? And they tell you to be conservative on both ends, so you get such, you get a wide range of what the costs are. You know, we talk about, we talk about abatement. Mr. Carroll could have probably went to about 40-some other states and got a better offer. In fact, he got offers from a lot of other states. It's kind of like the common thread with all the companies that we have in Lorraine County that are staying here in our county. The reason why they're here is because they're family-owned, they have family in the area, and it's an emotional attachment. We try to give some abatement to help them out, and if you look at our abatement, we went from 75% down to, I think it was like 55%. And the reason why is we like to front-load so that they can realize the best possible usage of their money to add more employees. So, that's why we start at the top and work our way down, because they need that money up front. And Mr. Carroll is here. It's a great company, like I say, family-owned company, and these are the ones that, in Avon, we have a lot of companies we put in over the past few years. The common thread is they're all family-owned. The common thread is they want to stay by their families, but we also have to give them some incentive to stay here. Even with our incentives, there's other states that they can do business cheaper, but being that they're emotionally attached to the area, this is what's holding them here, and we've got to put our best foot forward to hold these companies and for them to expand, because they're expanding in a different type of industry that is going to be recession-proof for the employees. And we already have Avon people and some other people in the county in Sheffield that work for their company. I've talked to these people. They're very happy with their bosses. Their bosses work right with them. This isn't a point where somebody's setting up in an office up here and doesn't see anybody's. They work right with their people. Their, his desk is right with everybody else's desk. When you walk into their office, everybody is working in one area, and it's a very casual work atmosphere, and I think that this is the type of companies that we try to push to maintain our job growth in Lorraine County. And if you have any other questions, I'll answer them. Chris Carroll is here, the owner of the company, so...
Questions, commissioners?
Well, I think regardless of how big or small we need to roll out the red carpet for any company that wants to locate to Lorraine County, my one question would be, the school board has already...
Yes.
...been notified and is on board with this?
Yes. It's like everything else. I think a lot of people realize that tax abatement is so-called dirty word. Reality is that we have to do something. The piece of property that they're going on probably gives us, right now, maybe $1,000 a year in open tax for property. When they're all done, even with tax abatement, they're going to be hundreds of times more than that, and plus bringing in jobs in. You know, we need employment.
Absolutely.
You know, we need employment. Small companies, what's great about small companies is if one leaves you, you don't die. You know, I always get worried. Mako has become so big, which is a great thing. You know, it's a great thing, but when they end up being 12% to 13% to 15% of your income, you start to worry, like Ford and U.S. Steel and the rest of them. We cringe every time one of those people say, "We might leave." You know, we're all puckering up when it comes to that. Well, you got smaller companies, you don't want to see anybody leave, but the smaller companies are the ones that are going to make your good base, that you can have good income, good jobs for people, and that it's not going to break a city's back or the county's back when they leave, if they would leave. You know, they've already committed. They bought twice as much property as what they need. They've committed to be here in the city of Avon and Lorraine County, and I think this is, these are the companies that we have got to do everything we possibly can. The theory was before, we'd only give abatement to big companies. We found out that's not perfect. What we need now is just to build a heck of a base with the companies we do have, the small companies, fast growth. How many people are going to build 70% growth in the next three years? How many companies do we know they're going to do 70% growth in three years? And that's a conservative estimate, so...
Does Mr. Carroll want to say anything?
Appreciate consideration.
We're glad you have family in the area.
Yeah. My second question, have you, thinking about utilizing the Port Authority to finance this project at all?
I've made Chris aware of the different agencies. They've been down to state for tax credits and a few other issues, but they, I've made him aware of the county and the ability to maybe get some money on a very positive for them, and I do for everybody. I hand them with the phone calls and I introduce them and let them, I don't want to be a middleman. I just give them the phone calls and let them talk to the people who are necessary to make the things happen.
Because that's another avenue to help...
Yes.
...help a company locate to our area, so keep that in mind.
And next Thanksgiving, when you pull that turkey out of the thing...
We'll think of you.
It's theirs.
No, we just come to your house for dinner.
I'm usually out of state on Thanksgiving. But anyway, I'll leave something there for you.
I'll move for approval of the tax abatement as outlined.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. I hope to have a couple more for you within the next six months.
I hope so, too.
Thank you. Job and Family Services bills?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Investments?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Appropriations?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Transfers?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Advances and repayments?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Requisitions?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses?
So moved.
Second?
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Bills?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Authorized various personnel actions as indicated?
Oh, we haven't heard from you today. You're awfully quiet.
Been a nice morning.
You get to do all the hard stuff, I get to do all the fun stuff.
Good.
I would like to request an executive session at the conclusion of our regular board business. I have two or three new hires to discuss, I have a couple issues of pending labor relations to discuss, and potential matter of litigation and the purchase of a property. So, we have a little bit of an agenda, and all these subjects are permissible under the sunshine law, so we'll need that at the conclusion of our regular business. Thanks.
Authorized release of retainage to S.A. Communal Company, Inc., Barberton, Ohio,
in the amount of $24,488 plus interest as final payment for work performed in the Lorraine County Justice Center. All the necessary paperwork has been received?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution Number 05-194, adopted March 3, 2005, authorizing the release and retainage to Coen, Inc., Brexville, Ohio, for the work performed in the Lorraine County Justice Center. The amendment is to reflect the retainage is to be $53,303.04 plus interest as final payment, not $49,466.04.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Amendment Resolution Number 05-40, adopted January 13, and Resolution 05-110, adopted February 3, authorizing the appointments of the APR inspectors for the year 2005. The amendment is to reflect the total appropriation for both APR inspectors for the year 2005 will be $3,400, with compensation established at $9.60 per hour, with mileage reimbursement of .40, .5 cents per mile.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
We had had two instances with the APRs, and what's the change on this?
It was a housekeeping resolution here, Commissioner. The way the last resolution was structured, it appeared to give a doubling of $3,400, when in fact it was supposed to be 34 inclusive, so that there was no confusion at a later date. We just wanted clarification and resolution of what the intent of the board at that time was.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, authorized Director Lorraine County Children and Families Council to enter into a vendor agreement with the J.C. Penney Company to purchase merchandise card for bedding materials. This is for TANF-eligible children, birth to three, enrolled in the Help Me Grow program, and their eligible siblings from age four through 17, in accordance with the terms of the county's contract with Department of Job and Family Services, which was executed November 18, 2004, and the sum not to exceed $50,000 from account 822010801490301, and also 430101 and 490101.
So moved.
I have a question. Jim, I'm sorry. When I had you in the office the other day, I wanted to ask you about this also. I think it was North Coast Bedding also submitted a bit on this, and I'd really like to see us use local companies if possible. Are we going to be able to do anything with that?
You know, I'm 100% with you, Commissioner. I really like to see this stuff stay to our locals, especially the small-business folks. We've been very successful at that over the years. The North Coast... We had originally sealed bid this. This was the third time that we went out. We weren't getting aggressive quotes. We had some bid defects. And over the holidays, nobody bid, period. North Coast came in a little bit late with their bid, and they actually missed it by 11 minutes, looking for parking space, no less.
Go figure.
I spoke to the owner about it.
So their bid was not able to be received. I did have considerable dialogue. Just to let you know, you don't have to accept the bids. I mean, you can reject the bids, go out again. You only had one bid, you could find that a reason to go out again. I did ask Mr. Crespo to go out and meet with North Coast Bedding in an attempt to, you know, try to get something set locally. And I think that he may be prepared to dialogue on that a bit this morning. But obviously, this is a good amount of money that would churn in this community. We can find a way of spending it here. But I have to defer to Mr. Crespo at this point.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning, Juan.
Juan Molina-Crespo, Executive Director of the Lorraine County Children and Families Council. Mr. Cortez is correct, Commissioner. I did meet with the principal at North Coast Bedding, and we spent an hour or so together with respect to his bid. As it turned out, a recommendation that I had made, after viewing his capacity to be able to provide the materials as were specified in the contract with Lorraine County and Job and Family Services, and how the specifications were indeed identified in our bid package, there were some concerns that I had, and I had made Mr. Cortez aware of those concerns. So although I agree, I think that Lorraine County vendors indeed need to be our first priority in terms of being able to involve them in these kinds of matters. Given the limitations that we had with respect to the three previous postings of the bid, the lack of participation other than from J.C. Penney, and of course, ultimately from North Coast Bedding, after reviewing all of that, it was my recommendation that we went with J.C. Penny's. Commissioner, just as additional information, these are funds that need to be encumbered through the purchase of merchandise cards by June 30. And as you're aware, we've been trying to get there since October or November. So we're concerned about having those funds being sent back to the state without utilizing them for the folks that are enrolled, the participants in the Help Me Grow program. So that was another issue that, you know, that I felt was extremely important, and we needed to move rather quickly, given what was faced... What we were faced with.
What would be the timeframe if we rebid this out? Could June 30th? Is it feasible to have the items purchased by then?
The... My understanding is that as long as we purch... If we were to go through the same procedure or the same model that we currently have, that you currently have before you in terms of the purchase of the merchandise cards, that would be fine, as long as we purchased those cards. We don't necessarily need to expend those cards by June 30. However, should we bid this out again, I would say... The best-case scenario, Commissioner, you're probably looking at five to six weeks before I come before you again requesting authorization or a resolution to enter into a contract. So that would put us... That would put us around mid-May.
So that's plenty of time.
We can certainly... If that's your desire, we can certainly try to do that, absolutely.
And your concerns... The concerns you had were just like furniture not matching or something, am I right?
Well, there was... I think there were some issues regarding the specifications from North Coast Bedding. I was not aware until I did the visit that there would be mixed-match sets of the box spring and mattress that North Coast would be providing. The gentleman also indicated that there was a possibility that there would be a price increase, which would then be passed on to him, which again, and given that we would then have a set price on that merchandise, he could not pass that cost increase on to the county board.
But he was okay with that?
Commissioner, I didn't really get into details with him on that issue. The other concern was the concern of the cribs. North Coast Bedding was not able to provide cribs nor crib mattresses. They would have to go to a third source in order to provide that for the participants in the program. So that also, then, you're talking about a subcontract between North Coast Bedding and whatever vendor they would use in order to provide cribs when the need for cribs became needed. Additionally, we talk about linen, bumper guards, mattress pads, and things of that nature. In addition, North Coast Bedding would not be able to provide those things as well, which means a third party would also have to be subcontracted in order to receive payment through the TANF dollars. So those were some of the major problems that I thought were reflected in the bid with North Coast.
Okay, thank you.
I think... I think if we aggressively pursue it, if it's the board's desire to rebid, I think we can get it done in about three weeks.
I would say, since we've only had one bid, it would be enough to justify rebidding it.
Well, you... In your bid packages, just for our own development together, you can reject a bid package for any or no reason whatsoever. We reserve the right to do that in the bid package, so it's already stated in there. But it is very difficult to competitively review something when you only have one. This has been a weird situation, excuse me, from the very beginning. I've worked with Juan. The first time we received a bifurcated bid from Sears that really wasn't much of a bid.
I believe it was Target.
Target. Then we tried to go out over the holidays, and we received no bids. And then we went back out at the beginning of the year, and we received one bid from Penny's. While the bid is able to be accepted, there was some minor issues with that bid, is how they were going to do some things. But it was within the parameters of acceptability. The... But I think that if we're aggressive, we could probably be back in three, maybe four weeks. We need to bid for two weekends. Well, we bid for two weekends, gave them a week, so you're looking at probably three board meetings from now, right?
No, later than four, yeah. Depending on when they get it in the paper and the date they pick.
Yeah, Teresa does all the posting, so she's a little bit more savvy on this than I am. But so maybe that was the desire of the board. I know Mr. Crespo's worked hard on this. Our only concern that he and I have both shared is that we don't return these dollars back to the state and don't procure materials here.
After this money is spent, spent by June 30, is there another $50,000 available for the next year?
Depends on what they program.
That's correct. This is an additional TANF award. It is not inclusive of the norm, sort of the normal TANF award that we get through Help Me Grow. So this is in addition to the Help Me Grow program that we have. But Commissioner, I don't know the answer to that, as to whether or not it would be available again.
It was almost like the Patriot Team Pregnancy Funds we had a couple of years ago. You know, when we finally got geared up and were able to effectively utilize the dollars, they dried up and disappeared. So, you know, it's hit or miss, depending on what monies are available through the state for our Department of Job and Family Services. But again, I think it would be stretching it, but it's doable. Either scenario, whatever pleases the board, I think, can be accomplished. We're just going to have to roll up our sleeves, Juan, and if the board so desires, we can go back.
Whatever the pleasure the board is.
Well, I've got a question on it, Jim. Do we have a plan to notify the small businesses, other than when we approve the advertising, it's one paper or the other? If you don't happen to see that, I mean, do we have a plan in Lorraine County to get to the small businesses so they have the opportunity to bid these?
Yeah, that's a very good question, Commissioner, and I'm going to give you a very poor answer.
Okay.
Yes or no?
Government it works.
Well, it's a no with a reason. And we don't maintain bid lists, because if you miss somebody or somebody wasn't honored, that wasn't notified, then you have an official defect. We do try to alert the local community unofficially to what's going on and through word of mouth and encouragement. And if we know of several businesses, we do try to make contact. But if you maintain official lists, it gets into a whole other area of potential defects and potential litigation that we try to stay out of. You know, I'd like to see more and more of our materials posted on the internet. I want to make our internet site a gateway to the community. Other people have been successful with that. We're working on it. Our hands have been a bit tied with our resources, but we're getting better. I envision by mid to late year, having, you know, all of this stuff on the internet. I want to be doing reverse bidding, and I want to be doing our auctions on the internet. Ms. Newton and I have talked very much about those issues, and we're getting aggressive with that. So it will get better. But I'm sorry I have such a long commentary, but the answer right now is no, and I think there's a very good reason why we don't.
Don't like the answer, but...
I didn't think you would.
Can I just state something? If you give direction to advertise today, we could possibly go to the papers, the two consecutive monies, which would be the 4th, the 11th, open the 18th, which could give us possibly time to put on the 21st agenda.
I would make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion?
Sorry for that. Juan, make you work even harder.
That's okay. It's my pleasure.
Ms. Kikowski?
Aye.
Mr. Kayla?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
So then Juan, you'll get with me in the thing and everything?
Thank you.
But let's... We're going to go back again. Let's all of us huddle and look at setting that bid up, okay? I think there's a couple of things we... Other things we could have did with it to make our life a little bit easier, too. If we do it one or two more times, we'll have a great one. I mean, we change it every time.
Do you want to just go in one paper? You want me to do two papers? Do you want me to do... I mean, I can... Whatever the pleasure the board is.
I would like to go in two papers.
You want me to do Chronicle and Journal?
The... What's the cost of advertising? What is that, out of your budget?
Thank you, Commissioner. We've already incurred about $1,100 in advertising costs that I have no guarantee that I'm going to be... That I'll have the funds in my pocket.
Well, let me help you. We just gave you $28,000 fans today, so...
There it is. Your cover's...
There you go. All right, I will take care of the rest. Yeah, I'll be able to take care of that. Commissioners, the prior board had developed a posture of only utilizing one local newspaper, and we took turns back and forth to eliminate some of the cost and overall duplication, excuse me, of resources. So I don't know whose turn it is. We don't really, you know, I don't really want to know. But if you want to advertise in both papers, do you want to continue that posture or just make an exception to it with this?
I think you heard Commissioner Kikowski say this time, and we're not talking about overall change in policy.
I was hoping for clarification.
Okay, and I want to suggest a little 37-cent stamp. You send it to somebody, and I listened to what you said, but you know, a little notice that says, "We're bidding this project. If you're interested, contact this person for bid specs." I don't think that... I just don't think that that...
And if you weren't the business that got the 37-cent stamp, and you found out that somebody else got it, how would you feel?
I don't care how you feel. It doesn't bring any responsibility against us for the notification. That's my point. I don't wish to discuss any further. I made a point.
Jim, can we also work on posting it like on LorraineCounty.com, the public website? Do we have anybody capable of that, so they know that we have bids out?
What I do think we just want to interrupt a little bit.
Sure, Ivan.
Especially with Job and Family Services, we're good at this. We will send, go through the newspaper, I mean, go through the Yellow Pages, and we will send a fax over a notice of what's being bidded out to those local companies. So we do put that step in there. So like in Juan's case, what I would do is look through our local, you know, the telephone book, pick out some of those vendors, call them up, get their fax number, and we will fax over the notice. That way, it takes care, we're not sending anything out postage. We're faxing it over, they have the notice there, and it's up to them then, after that, to come in and pick up a bid.
And we have no official list.
Exactly.
Well, I think what happens in...
So that's what we usually do.
What happens in government, though, is when you fax or call these small-business people, it's sort of like it's government-denominous process. I think maybe we ought to start something to help small business learn how to get into it.
We've done that, too, in the past, too. Yeah, we've held up.
Well, maybe just step that up a bit, so we'll get more participation.
I'm user-friendly here.
Well, you know, we're, we're having a prevailing wage seminar coming up, uh, that the board and the prosecutor's office discussed, and we're gonna be presenting stuff. Maybe time that we have another seminar on accessing, uh, various vendor relationships with the county, and we can, we can work on doing that.
We've done that too.
So we'll do another one.
I think we only, we sent out like over 200 something letters, and we probably got like two or three people to show up in conjunction with Community Development last year.
Well, maybe, well, let's get together. Let's work on it again. Even if it's an annual event where only a few people show up, and, and maybe we can do something with that through the Community Alliance at their summit, uh, get a lot of people showing up.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll see how well the prevailing wage one goes over, and we may be able to offer more.
So I go back to number 16. Um, your motion died due to a lack of seconds since we did something else.
Thank you.
Under Community Development Department, oh, I'm sorry, we were doing that too.
Emergency Management.
Emergency Management.
We're moving right along.
Award bid to W.W. Williams Brunswick in the amount of $75,376 for the purchase of three generators, one for each health department, Lorraine, Alaria, and the county. Bids were open on February 22nd, and this was the most responsive complying with specification, and it will be paid from account 23910-2801-440101.
Commissioners, I hate account numbers. It's Homeland Security funding.
I was gonna ask. I figured it was.
Yeah, you know, this crypto stuff kills me too, and I've been here a lot of years. So it's Homeland Security funds, uh, these three generators, and it's, it's a nice resource to the county for us to have.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kukowski?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Under Job and Family, approve and enter into a renewal agreement with Maximus to update the space report for Lorraine County Department of Job and Family. The rate is not to exceed 3,000. It will be paid from account 001014901450106.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Kukowski?
Hi.
Under Children's Services, authorize various additions and deletions of personnel in Children's Services to utilize the Shell Oil, Gasoline, and MasterCard, not to exceed $200 and $2,500 respectively for the year 2005.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kukowski?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Number 21 has been restructured. It is now going to re-approve and enter into an agreement between CSX Transportation, Inc., Florida, and Lorraine County Board of Commissioners Off, Lorraine County Board of Commissioners for the Rolling Heights Sanitary Sewer Project.
And where is Rolling Heights Sanitary Sewer Project located?
The, uh, Commissioners, this is a project that we've been working on for about three years in Sheffield Township. Uh, it, part of it comes off, we, we needed to get under the train sta, tracks by Pearl and 254. We have a couple parcels of land that we were able to get during a tax hearing on them, so we didn't have to get easements across those properties. Uh, the eas, the property lies between Campanis Concrete and some, uh, land that, uh, Mr. Rowland owns. If you kinda get a visualization going down Pearl there. So that easement will go right underneath the tracks there, and this is the final piece to put in this sewer. This is a petition sewer that we've been working on for the residents back there. Uh, so that's the area of Sheffield Township that we're working in and moving, uh, west up from Pearl Avenue.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kukowski?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Under Soil, Water, War Contract to NLM Excavating Norwalk in the amount of $36,377.59 for the Martin's Run Ditch Improvement Project. Three bids were submitted, this being the lowest and most responsive. Issue a notice to precede letter effective honor before April 18th and to be completed honor before June 30th. Authorize county administrator to notify the county auditor to release the retainage at the site completion of project, and will be paid from account 930024201491601.
So moved.
Um, Mr. Cortez, where is this Martin's Run ditch located?
The, uh, well, Martin's Run.
The one in Lorraine, Martin's Run?
Yes, but it, it's in Lorraine, but it also runs out into the townships. It's, it's quite a, quite a lengthy ditch, and it does a lot of drainage from the county. Uh, this would be, uh, in the township portion of the ditch. We don't normally do the ditch projects in the city, but they do work cooperatively. Uh, Ken Carney has done. I think they did the 38th Street.
36th.
36th cooperatively. But, uh, we have, we have some, uh, I wanna call it upstream blockage in the ditch right now, so it's not, uh, being blocked in the city of Lorraine. It's in the township.
Okay.
I was gonna say, Mr. Zunich sits here.
Chris?
Mr. Zunich.
I'm sorry, I didn't even, I forgot. You said you would be here. I saw your letter. I apologize.
Uh, Michael Zunich, Lorraine Soil and Water Conservation District. The particular project, Solaria Township, it's, uh, south of Griswold Road. Um, goes down to Albrecht, uh, about 3,000 feet long of ditch. And I think in the future what we'll do is we'll be submitting a little map to you people so you'll know where each one of these little ditch lines are. 'Cause some of these ditch lines, just like this one, are quite extensive. They extend for miles across the county, and we're only working on portions of them at a point in time. So we will be giving you a little map in the future. Thank you.
Martin's Run is, is one of the lodges, isn't it?
Oh, yeah, yeah. But there's some other ones that are just like that. I mean, they just go on and on and on. You know, and, and you, you hear the name, and people are assuming you're working the whole ditch line, and all we're talking about is a couple thousand feet out of, you know, 10 miles of ditch maybe.
There's not gonna be problems downstream, like in the Lorraine area where the Martin's Run ditches.
No, I mean, I think that the, the same amount of water is going to ultimately pass through the city of Lorraine. I, I don't think there's so much problem with the ditch where we're gonna be opening up a potential dike.
No.
And having the water run through. It's just a, you know, ongoing maintenance project.
Yeah, th, this program is basically a, a cleaning and maintenance program, and what we're really doing is improving, uh, if you wanna get from an engineering viewpoint, it's the low water flows, so the water doesn't lay in the ditches and back up and, uh, so overall, is it really contributing to anything to the downstream though? What it's really doing is it's cleaning it up to the point where you'll have better conditions throughout the whole channel.
You just don't wanna end up with a swell rather than a, a full.
Yeah, well, we're, it's, it's cleaning and maintenance, and one of the biggest problems in the county is maintenance on these ditches. Some of these ditch lines haven't been touched for 30, 40 years. And you have debris built up in the bottoms and, uh, trees laying in them, and silt is built up behind it, and what we're really doing is going in and cleaning all that out. Uh, we're not doing any major work in the sense of redesigning the ditch.
Okay.
Thank you.
We need a second?
I have a motion.
A second.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Ms. Kukowski?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Mr. Cortez, county minister?
Just to remind you about my request for the executive session. Thank you.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
We have no lit, new litigation filed this week, however, I think we're gonna get some.
Next week.
Sorry about that.
Miss Nurse Report.
Mr. Laurie?
No report.
Just been working on annexation all week.
I guess I could say thank you to all our, our administrative assistants who did a lot of work answering the phones and responding to emails and things for the annexation. Betty?
Tomorrow is, uh, Alliance Meeting Day at the college. I reminded you of it yesterday. That was so anybody see the television would know to be done on the right day, 'cause by the time they see this, it's over, so anyway.
Yeah.
It's gonna be interesting. That's it.
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
More comments?
I move the meeting be waived?
Second.
Ms. Blair?
Hi.
Mr. Kayla?
Hi.
Ms. Kukowski?
Hi.
Public comment?
Public comment?
Good morning. Um, my name again for you, I was here a few weeks ago, is Chris Goble, and I'm with Hopkins Transportation Service. And as, uh, County Commissioner Blair started out with a proper regarding jewels.
You have one for us, Chris.
Regarding jewels and how to make them better, our company does the same thing when we get in a situation where, um, we're not successful. And one of the things that we did do is we bid on the transportation for Lorraine County Transit. And what we did is we like to find out where our deficiencies were more than just what was submitted or reported to us. So what we did is we asked for the various, our, the RFPs and the related documents that were submitted by various bidders, and we analyzed that information so we can approve our, approve upon ourselves the next time around. When we do that, sometimes we discover things that are very critical to us and we could've done better. We also find some things that we feel that were not right in the whole process. And when that happens, we feel it's one of our rights to bring that to the attention to the areas or the authorities that did do the bidding process in attempts to help it the next time around to be better or to level the playing field. And that's what I wanted to speak to you about briefly. I wanted to give the commissioners, anybody else who'd like a copy of what our analysis was, after reviewing all the documents, some of the deficiencies that we feel were pretty striking. We went with some deficiencies that for the DB requirements were supposed to be met. It was not a good faith effort according to the RFP. They were not met. One of the other concerns was the cost summary analysis. One bidder was off by a million and five in their annual numbers, which, when you're doing any type of cost analysis, should've stood out or should've been calculated or Some of the miscellaneous cost items by some of the vendors were supposed to be documented according to the RFP. Were not documented. One of the such, uh, line items was 7% of the overall cost that bidder's contract. That was more than their profit margin of 3%. There was no information given in the RFP process or the pre-bid information regarding tires and lubrication that was considered a direct pass through or reimbursement, how we view it, from the county. One bidder did not even put an item in there, the current operator, because they were aware of that happening. That was not disclosed to any of the other bidders. In a, on that same line item, one bidder went from $126,000 annually for tires and lubrication, down to $9,000, back up to $54,000. One year had zero in it. Some of these things we feel should've been analyzed, asked questions why, and readdressed, either in a written format from those bidders or through the evaluation process of calling them in and allowing them to do an interview, which is our, my understanding was not done with any of the bidders for clarifications, which was addressed within the RFP that that was an option to do. And, um, I have copies that I will give to you for you to read over, and what I would ask is that you read through the information and either contact me or they allow the opportunity to come back and give me further explanation of my comments so that the whole process that went through, we went through can be more successful and more of a level playing field. That was all I wanted to say. I appreciate your time, and I hope you can enjoy this great day today that's left of it.
Thank you, Chris. Anyone else who wishes to address the board? I move we go into it.
I'd like to respond for a moment.
Is that necessary?
Yes, it is, if you would allow. I, I just want a clarification that a request for proposals is not a sealed bid. The reason that it's left as a request for a proposal vice a sealed bid is so that matters can be negotiated, discussed, expanded upon, and structured as necessary. So it's, it's a, uh, the proposal is a guideline, and the information's very important, but it's not all-inclusive, it's not exclusive. It's, it's, uh, sealed bids are. So while I'm not trying to be, um, contrary argumentative to your position, uh, I just want clarification for the record that this, that none of these things that you spoke to would have constituted a fatal defect. They may have in a sealed bid process, but in a request for proposal process, they're not. And another thing with a request for proposal, it's very, it's more subjective than objective. And we had, uh, a consulting firm that we paid quite a bit of money to, that's a well-received and well-renowned consulting firm, look over those proposals along with our local people and, and make this decision. Again, not to cast any, uh, aspersion onto your company. I'm sure it's a fine company. Uh, but they, they felt, uh, strongly that they had made the right choice. And while there was probably some issues that could be debated back and forth, uh, it's much like the annexation that you spoke to earlier, Commissioner. You, you do it this way, they're gonna be back this way. You do it that way, they're gonna go back that way. So it could go on and on and on. Uh, they, there, there was no, uh, attempt to, uh, not have a level playing field. Um, I'm a little bit concerned about the terminology. It appears that you indicate that somebody had an advantage that, uh, you didn't have, and that is, uh, completely inaccurate. Whether you disagree or agree with us that you're allowed to do that, but there was no unlevel playing field, uh, for anybody in this process. Everybody was given the same materials and opportunities. Did somebody feel differently about the point of views than you did? Well, apparently so.
Uh, well, I, I can understand the subjectivity to it, and I do know the difference between a proposal, RFP, and a bid, and if I use those terms simultaneously or in conjunction with each other, I do know the difference.
I wasn't actually for your, for you. I was just, we weren't, we do get viewed by the, by the public, and a lot of times they don't, they don't understand the nuances of the differences.
And I do understand that there are some items in there that can, according to the RFP process, be waived, but I also understand that there are areas in there that if it says it's required by the FTA, which you do get funding from, that is a requirement. It's not subjective at that point.
Oh, I agree.
And I also understand, um, that when one operator doesn't put a line item cost in there and they specifically state within their RFP or their proposal that they will, this price is subject to, this program's still continuing, and that information not being made public during the pre-bid meetings or any of the information that was submitted to any of the proposers, that, that's not right. Whether it was an, it was an oversight or not, the point is, I'm bringing this to your attention so that improvements can be made.
I, again, I, I, I respect your opinion. Uh, the, you're, you're allowed to have that. Uh, you're also allowed to indicate that you think improvements to be made. We feel differently, and I, uh, my team did the evaluation, they did the review, they feel comfortable with the, the position they've taken, and, uh, we also respect your opinion on the issue.
Well, I do have information, and I don't know about you, but 35% of the tax dollars for this project do come from state and federal money. 55% come from local money. And my 35% that helps pay for this program and other transit agencies, when I see a million and a half dollars being incorrectly stated, I don't look at that as being a small oversight.
Again, I don't know where you got the word "small oversight." I didn't use the word "small oversight." You used those words. Uh, the review, the review was done. They, they feel that they made the best choice. There was other issues besides economics that was explained in here that go into that review. Economics was a part of that review, but it wasn't a, the overall review.
It was.
And, and unfortunately, some have to win and some have to lose, and I, I respect the fact that you, as a competitive company, feel that it should've went to you. Uh, other people that are knowledgeable in the field felt differently.
And I can respect that, and, and you know when it likes to lose, but I like to know why, so next time around I can prove upon it. And, and maybe, um, my terminology as an oversight might've been a little strong, but anybody doing a financial review, as you called it, a review of those numbers, would've caught that.
As, as Mr. Ferguson stated when he was here the last time we discussed this, I believe, and I'm recalling from memory, so I don't want to be held to this, but I, I think I recall that only 30% of the overall review of the proposal was the fiscal aspects of the proposal. There was, there was others. I may be inaccurate in that percentage.
There was 20 points given to that.
Okay.
And the one operator I'm speaking to that made that mistake was given 17 out of 20 points.
Uh, were they, they, is it possible that they were able to correct that, that number?
Uh, that, you know, I don't have that information. That's why I bring it to your, your attention now.
Okay.
So you can review it.
Okay.
Excuse me, when we have an open bid process, you've mentioned the fact that it's negotiable. It leaves room for negotiation, so would his company and the other companies sit down at the table and, and look at these items together and say, you know, here's a 1.5 million? Did that happen?
It could. It, it doesn't always, but it could. It depends. A lot of times you'll have, and I, again, I didn't do the due diligence on this. I did speak with the team that did do the due diligence. Uh, the, uh, but I'll give you, for instance, if we were negotiating a healthcare contract, I mean, we have a $15 million healthcare plan. We normally receive six or seven proposals from, from the biggest vendors out there. We look at the, the, what we feel is the best one or two and try to work with those. It's just untenable to deal with too many people at one time. I, I can't speak to the people, what their thought process was with this one, but if I was doing it, I probably would've taken the top one or two proposals. I think there was only three or four, so I probably would've taken one or two that I felt were the strongest, and then worked within those proposals. Uh, and if I wasn't able to achieve the results I was seeking, then I may have went to the second or third one. It's similar for a request for qualifications. When you do a request for qualification, which is another whole process, you first, you gotta, uh, work with the companies on their qualifiers. Then you pick the, the company that gets the most points from the initial review, and then you meet with them, and you talk about their qualifications. Then you seek a cost proposal from them. So there's various methodologies that are used to get to that. Uh, again, I don't wanna, I did not, I do not know the specifics of this company's, uh, merit. I, I believe that they, they took the one or two strongest proposals that they felt were the strongest, and they worked within those. That would not be uncommon, and that's usually the way we do that.
When this was brought before us a few weeks back, um, there was so much information, and, and I had asked for another week to try to digest some of that, and that wasn't the board's decision to do that. One of the things was, I know they're not a Lorraine County company, but they are in our region, and, and I felt strongly that, you know, to give them a chance. I don't know if anything was, you know, human error, but I wish we would've given it another week or so to, to really digest all that information.
The, and, and I understand your position, Commissioner. We, we, we had a consultant firm. We just didn't do this in-house. While we have certain expertise and talents, and I'm, and I'm comfortable, we probably could've gotten to the process, in order to avoid some of these very similar, these, these situations, we asked for outside help, and we did get a very good firm to work with us, and, and we did not give them any marching orders about where we wanted to be. Quite frankly, it would've been very easy to stay with the incumbent. By the way, all the buses will be rumbling across Lorraine County tonight. I believe this is the 31st, this 31st tomorrow. MV is taking over, and we're, we've been working all week on that transition, so hopefully that'll be fairly seamless to the, to the public out there. It's a contract that has to be competitively bid in the future. I'm quite sure we're gonna be quite intimate with this gentleman.
In the future, I think the best solution would be to have each company sitting down at the table and picking each other's proposals apart and then finding the best one. We might not even need an outside consultant.
Well, the unfortunate part about doing it is everybody has the best mousetrap, and it gets in, when it's subjective, it gets into points of view and opinions.
Well, 1.5 million is not an opinion. That's a solid number.
What I, I, well, I understand your position, Commissioner.
Well, let me first say, you know, I'm not here to cause any type of dissension. I'm here just to give you some information. The, we have bid this in the past, when it has gone out before, so this is, this particular contract is not new to us. The, when we've bid on other things similar to this, we operated, how counties pair transit for 15 years there, and some of the other operators, contracts we operated throughout the country. The general acceptance is, as Mr. Cortez says, they narrow it down to two, three operators. One of those operators generally is the incumbent operator, just simply you're spending